This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, this is getting started. This is the Planning Commission meeting for March 29, 2022. We will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic for which we stand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll just start with the roll call. We are all here. I don't need to go through that. Want to go through the meeting rules?
Yes. For an orderly meeting within wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. Please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn the podium microphone on before speaking and off when completed. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box indicated by the speech balloon icon in the upper right. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting.
Thank you, Greg. There are no meeting minutes to approve. Greg has promised that he'll get them all done for the month of March for next month. And so we'll move on to comprehensive plan review.
So for the comprehensive plan update review, we have the meeting scheduled April, and I forget the date. Is it the 10th? Well, April, two weeks from today, April 12th, we'll have our next workshop meeting. Hopefully, GoToMeeting doesn't do an upgrade right before our meeting, so we can continue with that meeting. We received all of the prioritization from the Planning Commission, so we will be going through that and coming up with new goals and objectives for resource protection. And then also, we'll be reviewing the goals and objectives from the first meeting, so the overarching goals and objectives. Additionally, I've been working on some mapping related to the resource protection, so I'll have some preliminary statistics to go over and maps to kind of go over with everybody during that resource protection meeting. So that's about, that's where we are, and we'll have everything ready for that meeting. I will test multiple times prior to that meeting.
All right. Thank you, David. We will move on to item five, which is subdivision review. There are two cases tonight. The first one is 1670 Church Road, Pata Property LLC, major plan 2022-104. It's a request for a sketch plan review. Greg?
This is an application to further develop the property located at 1670 Church Road. The plan proposes to renovate the existing commercial building, construct a 23-space parking lot, and stormwater management facility on the 4.9, sorry, 3.4912 acre parcel. The property is zoned industrial commercial one, special height limitation IC1. Pata Property LLC is the owner and applicant. The community development department recommends that the applicant utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies and those of the Planning Commission to assist in the preparation of the preliminary plan, and deadline dates to act on the plan are not applicable to sketch plans.
Okay. Now we have the applicant presentation.
Kevin Markle with Barry Isaac and Associates. I think Greg generally covered what we're here for. It is a sketch plan review to reutilize the existing building at 1670 Church Road for a motor vehicle repair facility, what it was previously used for. We will be adding paving for vehicle parking, truck storage while they're being repaired, with one driveway access to Church Road. We will be proposing underground stormwater management as our main control, along with a spray irrigation system to meet our MPDS permitting requirements. We're in the preliminary stages of testing and evaluations of those. Unless there are really questions on the layout and the site, the main thing I would like to touch on tonight and try to get some direction on is the roadway requirements, the improvement requirements to Church Road. Church Road is classified as an arterial road, as such would require an 80-foot total right-of-way, 40-foot half-width, and a 25-foot half-width cartway. What we show on the sketch plan is what the ordinance requires in terms of the road widening, curb, sidewalk. However, looking at the plan, there are a couple of what I will call limitations and concerns from a safety perspective that I'd like to touch on, get some feedback, see if there's any thoughts on directions to proceed. In the northeast corner of the site, where we abut the Liberty Metals property, obviously, the existing configuration of that site, the widening and the sidewalk would essentially run right into the middle of their access and driveway. And as you go further north on their site, their building is obviously close to the road. Their parking is actually backs right out onto the road. So we have a situation there where it gets a little tight to just bump the widening out, you know, not sure if there's any, anything we can come up with, maybe a taper or something like that. The other area is obviously at the southwest portion of the site where we meet the railroad tracks. Obviously, as you get across the railroad tracks, Church Road becomes a one-way road to the southwest, about 14 to 17 feet out of the railroad tracks. So if you would zoom in to that corner of the property, you can see how significant of a difference we're talking from where the widening and the curb and the sidewalk would go versus where the existing cartway is that crosses the railroad tracks. There's also a PPL easement in that corner of the site, as well as a drainage covert and some guide rail. So, you know, really, from a safety perspective, it's a little, you know, I'm not really sure we want to run sidewalk all the way down right to a railroad track with no crossing then. And the alignment and configuration of the road, I'm just not sure how to really transition that. Running it right to the edge of the property, as ordinance requires, I believe we would have to end up doing work within the railroad right-of-way because of grading such. So I'm kind of curious if there's any thought to potentially maybe some deferrals or waivers for the amount of widening, the length of it, you know, to maybe taper the road back before we get to the railroad tracks, just from a safety perspective, to transition everybody over to the existing cartway that then crosses the railroad tracks. So really, just looking for kind of feedback, you know, on that topic right now?
Okay. One thought that we've discussed some is actually ending the road and putting a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And just wanted to throw that out.
Okay.
As a thought. We're, you know, just at the beginning here, but...
So you would literally be talking about dead-ending Church Road, discontinuing it so it can't go across then. That's a thought. I hadn't thought about that before.
There may, we may need some land to do that.
Yeah, so there would obviously be a trade-off in terms of the width to do a cul-de-sac bulb and turn around, you know, for right-of-way area. Are we thinking it would be down near that southern portion, like maybe between the two driveways on the opposite side, or is this really? And the only reason I ask that is, in thinking back to my spray irrigation layout and design, you know, as we get further, what I'll say, north on Church Road, that's where I have more of the land kind of reserved for stormwater management. But if it is in that southern portion of the site, it might be feasible, you know, to make it work. Would, would we, if we're going to dead-end the road, would there still be a desire for the sidewalk and the full widening for the full extent then, if we're going to dead-end the road?
We could talk about that, I think, you know. The cul-de-sac would be to get the trucks that went the wrong way could at least turn around and get out of there.
Okay, but there may be some, some potential trade-off in terms of the width of the widening or something like that for the...
Would the applicant be willing to, you know, sort of put a sketch together? You're talking about safety and some right-of-way acquisition would be required. Would the applicant be willing to put a sketch together showing where a cul-de-sac would work and work with our township engineer regarding that? And if it's dead-ending at a cul-de-sac, you probably don't want the sidewalk going beyond the cul-de-sac, but you'd work at that out with our township engineer?
Yeah, I mean, if this is something we want to explore, I think, I think I can speak from that. We'd be willing to, to look at it at a conceptual level, work with your, your engineer on the logistics of it and, you know, what makes sense, you know, how do you transition after, you know, with the other PPL driveway? I'd be open to that, yes.
We understand putting a sidewalk into the railroad right-of-way, that's going to be very difficult and work with the railroad.
Yeah, I don't think anybody really wants to go down that avenue if we don't have to.
Let me ask you this question. In terms of how the plan sits today, not, forget about the cul-de-sac at this point, but if you wanted to defer the improvements south of the entrance, what point would you want to start, or what point would you limit your improvements at this point? Are you talking about improving some or all, or would you just talk about doing south of your entrance and then deferring the rest to later? Will you, because you're getting into the cut in that slope and where do you stop it with...
Correct. The further south you go along that road, the steeper the embankment that you would have to cut in if you do the widening. If I would propose, I would essentially from the driveway, our radius of our driveway, I would propose a taper back out to the existing cartway from there. We really don't envision our traffic going that way, you know, leaving our site and going that way. That's what I would propose, but understanding what the ordinance requires is obviously something different.
My question has to do with the gate that you have there, cuing what's the intent of the operations, because that could have a lot to dictate how much wide you got to make that road. We cannot have a situation like push and pull, how trucks are parked on Gramm's Road. And if this becomes a situation where you're not open 24 hours a day and that gate's blocked at certain hours, when vehicles approach, they're going to park out on Church Road. So that's, that's like how your operations, are you going to be having your own tow trucks? There's all kinds of layers of the operations of these facilities. And to be fully transparent, I worked in one of these facilities 26 years. So if you wonder where some of my questions come from, I have intimate knowledge of how these operations...
Yeah, I mean, if, if you have any of those questions on the exact operation of the building, I would ask the applicant to speak to those.
But my main concern is that gate...
Correct, understood. And that's something we can look at and work with the applicant in terms of how he envisions the functioning of the business. I believe the, the gate was there just for the purpose because there are parking spaces on the west side of the site, and one of the requirements is to, you know, screen, screen everything. So that was kind of the purpose of the gate, was you do have an ability to then screen everything that would be stored in there.
The plan I have has three gates, so you're segregating the building from...
Yeah, it's, it's to keep all of the trucks that will be parked there overnight and stuff segregated from his employee parking and stuff.
Why would that be necessary overnight? If you have a gate at the, at the entrance, why would you need internal gates unless...
Are the entire...
Are these trucks going to be domiciled there?
I would...
Are these trucks going to be domiciled there? Are, are, are drivers going to pick up a truck and then return them? And you need to come to the microphone so the people online can hear you. Thank you.
You mean storing an actual trailer there? He does a run, comes back.
I don't know that from him.
No, I'm asking, is that what we're asking?
Right, like...
When you say domiciled, you mean a guy goes, does a three-day run, comes back, parks his truck for two, then picks it back up again?
Right. Kind of what's, like, what's going on over at Ryder, the food, Southern? They run the double trailers out of there. First way to know.
Okay, but we would still like to hear from you. If you could come up to the podium and turn the microphone on. Just hit the little button on the microphone?
My name is Navjat Pada, and my address is 1952 Applewood Drive in Orfield. We are hoping if, I don't know how many parking lots are in there, in the, that you have assigned?
There's 11 of the full size and then seven of the lot.
So out of 11, there could be potentially five parking spots that could be potentially, you know, would be parked with those kind of trucks that could be staying overnight for two or plus days.
Without being worked on?
Because if the truck was, or trailer was dropped off, we are thinking it's not going to be immediately fixed. Sometimes we are waiting for the parts to get it fixed, and it could take five to seven business days or so forth.
Okay, thank you.
But you're not renting spaces? No. I think that was testified at the zoning hearing board, that this was not to be trailer parking rentals. One more question for the engineer, or actually for the owner. Are you repairing cars as well or strictly just trucks? So I noticed on your parking calculations, you have to have four car spaces for each bay?
That is what the zoning ordinance requires, yes.
Did you ask for any relief on that, given the fact that we only have, it looks like
Seven employees.
Seven spaces for employees, and you have an additional 16 spaces that don't seem like they're needed?
Relief was not requested. I was not involved with the original zoning, zoning application and request, but relief was not requested for the parking requirement.
Any other questions? So that, if you wanted to do fewer parking space, would require zoning relief?
Understood.
I guess the others would be deferrals.
So, so I guess just for procedurally, if we work with, with staff and kind of look at some options and stuff, is that something the board would then like to see as a sketch plan again to kind of then weigh in before we jump back into full design?
I think so.
Okay.
And a better understanding of the operations.
Certainly.
So we know what we need to do with the frontage, as if there's trucks parking on there. It's a whole nother conversation.
Is there possibility of providing, you know, a brief narrative sort of?
On the actual operation of the building? Yeah, we can, we can certainly.
Hours of operation, are they going to be involving, are you going to own your own tow truck, own service vehicles, that kind of thing?
Now, are you planning on bringing, you know where the water and sewer is closest to the site? Is it up at the corner intersection or PJ?
Correct, up at the intersection of Housman and Church.
Your intention would be then to hook up?
That is our intention, yes, yes. And we know we have to work with Public Works and...
Are any of the buildings in between you and those hookups not hooked up? I would assume so.
I believe the Liberty Metal Building was hooked up when the expansion for the Chapman's Road Warehouse was done. I believe they were hooked up at that time, and obviously PJ's is hooked up.
Think of the Liberty Metals property. That could be redeveloped, too. There's different layers, you know. Some others in the area, so selling, but yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Are you looking for anything else you did get?
Honestly, with, with a sketch plan, that was the main, the main topic I kind of wanted to get some feedback on. I think everything else, you know, we work through as we get through land development and stuff, but this, this really kind of has a big impact, obviously, so.
And also, if he would know approximately how many vehicle trips per day, I mean, obviously, it's not a lot, but we have to think of how the trucks are getting into the facility. Are they going to be turning at the left at Ridge View, the arrow there, arrow at the other one?
Yeah, that's something we can include.
Yeah, there's...
With a revised narrative.
Yeah, so it just helps us globally plan to make everything more successful. And my final question is, and you might not know the answer, do you know if there's any existing underground tanks remaining from the gas station that was there? Because it's been out of operation for over 30 years, so.
Anything else? Do you have what, what you were looking for?
I have the feedback I was looking for, so thank you.
Okay. Motion.
No, I don't need to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next case is Ridge Farm Final Plan Phase 1A, Major Plan 2017-101, and it's a request for final plan review. Greg?
Yeah, you may want to get comfortable. This is an application to develop the properties located in Huckleberry Road, PIN 548745422139. The plan proposes one 30,000-square-foot medical office, the construction of approximately 265 linear feet of Road F, and the north side of the Walbert Avenue Office Center Road intersection, the construction of approximately 240 linear feet of Road G, and the driveway onto Walbert Avenue, the construction of the entire commercial village Main Street, right-of-way improvements along the entire northern frontage of Walbert Avenue east of Cedar Crest Boulevard, and approximately 515 linear feet of the eastern frontage of Cedar Crest Boulevard north of Walbert Avenue, and associated stormwater management facilities on the 9.15-acre portion of the 111.1787-acre tract. The property is zoned R10 and TND Residential Cluster Overlay District and is being developed as a TND Residential Cluster Overlay. K-Walbert LLC is the equitable owner and applicant. The community development department recommends that the Planning Commission recommend preliminary, I'm sorry, final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, that the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor. Be executed that sufficient security in a form acceptable to township be posted. Such security shall be available withdraws, presentations, no further than 60 miles from the township's office, and evidence of necessary insurance coverage shall be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of township engineer the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review dated March 24, 2022. Three, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of the township geotechnical consultant the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated March 4, 2022. Four, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of the township TND consultant the comments of Mr. Thomas Comita as contained in his review dated March 9, 2022. Five, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of the community development department the comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated March 24, 2022. Six, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of the zoning officer the comments of Ms. Laura Harrier as contained in her review dated March 25, 2022. Seven, that the applicant complies with the January 10, 2022 recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board. Eight, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by the Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Nine, if deemed to be necessary, that the applicant obtains a favorable review from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. Ten, that the application, applicant obtains a letter from PADEP approving the sewage facility's planning module or exemption thereto. Eleven, that the applicant obtains highway occupancy permit, or permits, from PennDOT for road and utility work within the right-of-way of Walbert Avenue, and twelve for within the, the work within the right-of-way of Cedar Crest Boulevard. Thirteen, that the applicant shall dedicate additional right-of-way for Walbert Avenue to achieve the ultimate right-of-way for an arterial road. The dedication of road right-of-way shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of dedication in a form acceptable to township solicitor and shall be provided to the township with opinion of record title provided, provided by the applicant's counsel that would indicate the right-of-way is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would adversely affect the township's use of said right-of-way. Completed roads will be accepted upon fulfillment by the applicant of duties and responsibilities set forth in the agreement pursuant to Section 31231 of SALDO. Fourteen, same thing applies for the Cedar Crest Boulevard to achieve an ultimate right-of-way of an arterial road. Fifteen, same thing applies for the right-of-way, or the frontage of Huckleberry Road to achieve a right-of-way of Collector Road east of Cedar Crest Boulevard and achieving an ultimate right-of-way of Arterial Road west of Cedar Crest Boulevard. Sixteen, same thing applies for the frontage of Guth Road to achieve an ultimate right-of-way of local road. Seventeen, same thing applies for the frontage of Fooked Avenue to achieve an ultimate right-of-way of a local road. Eighteen, that the applicant shall dedicate additional right-of-way along the frontage of Buckman Street to achieve the ultimate right-of-way for a local road. Same thing applies. Nineteen, that the applicant shall dedicate to the township a utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to the township for accessing sanitary sewer lines to be dedicated to the township. The dedication shall occur prior to the plan being recorded. The dedication shall be by deed of easement in a form acceptable to the township solicitor and an opinion of record title prepared by the applicant's counsel indicating that the easement is free and clear of liens and encumbrances that would affect the township's use of said property. The applicant shall furnish to the township solicitor a description of the easement that has been approved by the township engineer, a copy of the deed, current deed for the property showing current ownership, and cites the deed book volume and page reference. Twenty, same thing occurs for utility easement of sufficient size in an area acceptable to township to be, for the township for the accessing of water lines to be dedicated for the township. Twenty-one, that the applicant shall dedicate a blanket easement for municipal stormwater inspection and maintenance to the township. Same thing applies with that. Twenty-two, that the... Twenty-two, that the bike slash pedestrian paths along Walbert Avenue and Cedar Crest Boulevard located on a private property be placed within a bike slash pedestrian easement that ensures public access, places the maintenance responsibilities on the property owner or the homeowners association, and guarantees the township the right, but not the obligation, to maintain the path at the expense of the property owner or homeowners association. Twenty-three, the street trees along Walbert Avenue and Cedar Crest Boulevard and located on a private property shall be placed within the bike slash pedestrian easement that places the maintenance responsibilities on the property owner or the homeowners association and guarantees the township the right, but not the obligation, to maintain the trees at the expense of the property owner or the homeowners association. In addition, the ordinance and/or plan approval obligation for maintaining and replacing street trees shall also apply to the trees being replaced within the bike slash pedestrian easement. Twenty-four, that the applicant shall agree upon satisfactory completion of all storm sewer, water, and sanitary sewer facilities shown in the plan as intended for dedication to the township to execute formal bills of sale for said facilities so as to convey said facilities to the township for nominal consideration. Twenty-five, that the applicant addresses to the satisfaction of the Township Community Development Director, Township Engineer, and Township Solicitor that all rights deemed necessary by them for road access, road connections, and rights of way indicated on the plans in the area of Buckman Street and Dawes Street have been obtained by the developer and that the opinions of record title, where deemed advisable by the township solicitor or engineer, be provided. Twenty-six, that a declaration of covenants and easements for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities prepared by the township solicitor be executed for the maintenance of the onsite stormwater management facilities. Twenty-seven, if deemed to be necessary, that the applicant shall ensure that the township's right to enforce the speed limit on all private roads to be maintained by the HOA be guaranteed to the satisfaction of the township. Twenty-eight, that the applicant shall secure all public improvements and execute all required agreements prior to the recording of the plan. The applicant shall restrict by deed restriction or similar instrument approved by the Township Solicitor's Office the portion of the Ridge Farm tract proposed to be developed under the TND Residential Cluster Overlay beyond that which is to be constructed under Final Plan Phase 1A to remain open space in perpetuity. Said open spaces, that, sorry, said open space is to be maintained by the HOA until such time the final plan for the next phase or sub-phase is recorded. This Final Plan Phase 1A shall not be permitted to be recorded if this plan will cause the portion of Ridge Farm tract proposed to be developed under the TND Residential Cluster Overlay as a whole to no longer comply with the TND Residential Cluster Overlay regulations. Twenty-nine, that this Final Plan Phase 1A shall meet the active open space requirements of Section 35031F2CIA by a means acceptable to the township prior to the recording of the plan. Thirty, that prior to the issuance of a temporary or permanent certificate of occupancy for the proposed medical office building, the applicant shall complete to the satisfaction of PennDOT the traffic improvements required by the PennDOT approved HOP plan, which are associated with the medical office building being approved by Ridge Farm Final Plan Phase 1A, particularly including but not limited to the Office Center Road Intersection Signalization or alternatively substantially complete traffic improvements required by the PennDOT approved HOP plan as determined by the township staff to be needed to address the traffic generation of the medical office building. Thirty-one, as to any matters requiring solicitor review and approval of homeowners association, HOA documentation, or which township staff or solicitor determine to be advisable for including, for inclusion in such HOA documentation, the plan may be recorded upon solicitor review and approval of language addressing such issues without actually recording, without actual recording of HOA documentation in the Office of the Recorder of Deeds of the Declaration of Planned Community or Declaration of Condominium containing such language. However, such documenta, however, however, such declaration shall be recorded to the satisfaction of the township solicitor prior to the certificate of occupancy, temporary or permanent, being issued for the medical office building. Thirty-two, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township engineering and legal services prior to the plan being recorded. Thirty-three, that the applicant shall meet all conditions of the Final Plan Approval and the Record Plan will be recorded within 12 months of conditional Final Plan Approval. And the applicant agrees that if such conditions are not met, the conditional Final Plan Approval will be considered void and the application for Final Plan Approval will be considered void and withdrawn unless otherwise approved by the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners. Thirty-four, if for any reason, any conditions or conditions, any condition or conditions of this resolution or any portions thereof shall be held by a forum of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, void, or unenforceable in any respect or to any extent. One, this resolution shall automatically be deemed null and void in its entirety and shall be deemed to have been immediately and automatically repealed as if it had never been passed. Two, this resolution shall automatically be deemed to be a resolution denying the application due to the fact that the application does not comply with these sections of the SALDO or any applicable ordinances listed herein or in any of the review letters referred to herein, including any section relating to waivers and deferrals. And three, the applicant is waiving any right to proceed with an action seeking a deemed approval of the plan based on the automatic repeal of this resolution identified in this condition. The applicant acknowledges that each and every term and provision hereof is an essential material component of the township's approval of the applicant's plan. And last but not least, thirty-five, in the event that the township becomes involved in litigation of any kind relating to the major subdivision other than a direct appeal by the applicant of the township's approval of this resolution, such as an appeal of this resolution by an adjoining property owner or a third party or an attempt to collaterally challenge any conditions of this approval by means other than a timely appeal of this resolution, the applicant, on behalf of itself or its agents, representatives, successors, and assigns, hereby agrees to exonerate, indemnify, protect, defend through legal counsel of the township's choice and save harmless the township and its boards, committees, and commissions, including the individual members thereof, their elected and appointed officers and officials and their employees, contractors, other professional consultants, engineers, solicitors, managers, representatives, advisors, predecessors, successors, agents, independent contractors, insurers, and assigns, collectively the township representatives, from any and all claims, lawsuits, proceedings, actions, disputes, causes, and rights of action, expenses, losses, allegations, demands, charges, injuries, costs, including without limitation attorneys' fees, engineers' fees, and other costs and expenses incurred, including expert witness fees, damages, including without limitation compensatory, consequential, or punitive damages, sanctions, and liabilities of every kind, character, and manner whatsoever in law or in equity, civil or criminal, administrative or judicial, contract tort, including without limitation negligence of any kind or otherwise quote-unquote claims pertaining to, relating to, resulting from, caused by, and/or, and residing out of township's approval to make the application as evidenced by this resolution and/or the township's taking any action contemplated by the conditions thereof. The township's deadline, Planning Commission deadline to act on the plan. Soft deadline is April 30. The Board of Commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is April 30, 2022.
Thank you, Greg. You good with all that?
Yes, we are, actually. And first of all, good evening. Jim Preston back before you. Of course, Jason Engelhardt with Langen and Rob Hoffman with Traffic Planning and Design. We did go through all this. Actually, this has been kicking around for a while. Addition letter that we had from before. We're okay with all of this. There were two that were just added. And again, we don't have any difficult, difficulty with them. I just had a question. This has to do with the certificate of occupancy for the proposed medical office building and it requires that the PennDOT traffic improvements be installed, which we're not disputing that. I did have a question for my engineer. Were those improvements quantified? He told me that they're identified in the traffic study. Don't you agree with that? Is that?
That's correct. The traffic study for 1A approved by PennDOT.
That quantifies them?
Quantifies improvements.
Yeah, we have no issues unless the commission has any questions for us.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Any questions for the applicant from the Planning Commission? Okay, we'll move on to courtesy of the floor. Any comments or questions from the floor? Anything on the? Okay. Then back to, we want to make a motion to, I'm lost now, recommend this to the Board of Commissioners by subject to the 35 conditions.
And subject to the latest engineering letter. Subject to the conditions. Basically conditional preliminary. Is it preliminary or preliminary final?
Final.
Final to board.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Oh, second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Starting at this end. Mark Luth? David Wilson?
Aye.
Alan Tope?
Aye.
Bill McNair?
Aye.
Brian Height?
Aye.
Diane Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving right along. Do we have any transportation infrastructure updates?
No, not since the last one.
That's fine.
Provided my report. If there's any questions, feel free, but.
That's fine. Thank you. Item seven is conference plan update. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, David?
Just with regard to the transportation, I don't know if I mentioned at the last meeting that we, we met with PennDOT on the 309 Betterment Project. They are moving ahead with that project. It involves a lot of turn lanes, restriping between Walbert and Orfield. I forget the road, but it's up into North Whitehall. That project is moving forward. It got kind of pushed up because of the, all the infrastructure money. So we'll be seeing more information coming from them on that project. They agreed to a public meeting to go over the plans, kind of an open house. So we're working on scheduling that. Additionally, we met with PennDOT on their signalization plan for Mott Chunk. That's moving forward. That's another project that got kind of pushed up based on funding. So we'll be seeing more on that as soon as we get, they have a digital plan review that they'll forward to us and then we'll put the link on the website. So those projects are moving along and we're starting to see more movement of PennDOT projects.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, David. Will there also be a public meeting on the Mott Chunk signalization?
I think, I think they, because this, and I don't know the details of how PennDOT operates as far as the public meetings, but I got the impression from our conversation that they have the signalization plan and they have a digital platform for those plan reviews and then they have a comment submission that way. So I don't think they have an actual meeting on it. And I think they kind of pick and choose and we, for the Betterment Project, we kind of push for a public meeting because that's frankly a lot bigger project. I get more into that.
Is there any timeline where you would expect that public meeting to happen for the 309?
They're still working through a few issues. Stormwater primarily. You know, where to locate detention basins, things like that. One of the things that we're really pushing and one of the, the reason that we reached out to them is we wanted to make sure there was coordination between the HOP folks and the Betterment Project. We have the Wawa at the corner of Chapman's coming in. Wanted to see what kind of coordination was going on with that. So we're working with PennDOT to kind of make sure they're accounting for new development aware of what's going on. It was a very productive conversation. It was enlightening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's important, that, that coordination. Thanks. Okay. We'll move on to agenda item eight, courtesy of the floor. Anything out here? Anything on the chat? Okay, agenda item number nine is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Be done.